Roll call.
Mayor Galbraith.
Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Ellsworth.
Here.
Culberstein.
Here.
All right, I'd like to begin this council meeting with a moment of silence in memory of the three remarkable pathway home professionals who lost their lives last Friday. A close friend of Jennifer Golick made a heartfelt comment that my mind conveys our feelings of deep loss from the tragedy. "My mind is spinning," she said. "I just can't put into words what a wonderful human being the world has lost." Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much.
Mayor, may I just offer a couple of comments regarding that particular matter? I have some prepared remarks I'd like to read, just a short little.
Absolutely.
This may be the best time to do it. On behalf of our city, I would like to thank our first responders and also offer our love and prayers to the town of Yountville, the Veterans Home Community, and the family, friends, and coworkers of Christine Lober, Jen Golick, and Jennifer Gonzalez. Having lost my own father and grandmother under similarly tragic circumstances when I was just seven years old, I am very mindful that mere words cannot match the depths of your sorrow, nor can they heal your wounded hearts. I know this to be particularly true for a child who has inexplicably lost a mom or dad at such a young age, like the young one we had here in St. Helena. I can only hope it helps you to know that you're not alone in your grief, that our St. Helena community too has been torn apart, that all across the Napa Valley and beyond, we have cried with you. We've pulled our loved ones even tighter. And you must know that whatever measure of comfort we can provide, we will provide. Whatever portion of sadness that we can share with you to ease your heavy burden, we will gladly bear it. You are not alone.
Thank you very much. Very well stated. All right, let me move forward to the city attorney. The council met in a closed session. Is there any reportable action?
Yes, the city council did meet this afternoon to discuss the one item that was designated on the special closed session meeting agenda for this afternoon, whether to initiate litigation. The city council did meet. Vice Mayor White was not present for that meeting. The city council did give direction to initiate litigation if and only if efforts to settle the matter short of litigation were unproductive. If and when a lawsuit is necessary and filed under the Brown Act and the Public Records Act, that lawsuit will be available to members of the public upon request.
Next item on our agenda is public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address us on matters of municipal concern, not on our agenda tonight. Does anybody wish to speak at public forum? I'll close public forum. Next item is reports by staff and city council, future agenda items, and AB 1234 reports. Mr. Prestwich.
Thank you, Mayor. The city clerk is going to queue up a short item here, and I have been providing council updates on progress with the SHAPE Committee, and I'll continue to do that. Tonight, I'm sorry, tomorrow night at 6:30 in this room, the SHAPE Committee will begin to discuss city buildings for the first time, really, various proposals, so it should be an exciting night. That meeting begins at 6:30 in this room. And tomorrow, we will also be conducting the, I'm sorry, later this week, we will be conducting the first of the focus groups that will run Thursday, Friday, and Monday. And data from those workshops will be, those individual focus groups will be shared with the committee a little bit later. One of the discussion points that the committee had about a month ago was interest in helping to raise awareness of the work that they're doing on behalf of the council. And so we've worked with a local filmmaker to put together a short little clip that's now running at the cameo. It's been placed on our website, and it's been distributed via email. And I encourage as many people as possible to see it and share it on social media, which will be a way of amplifying that. So we're going to play that shortly for you, and because it moves a little quick, we may need to play it twice. SHAPE is an acronym, St. Helena Assets Planning Engagement.
I'd love for in 50 years if people look at this town and go, wow, they were thinking.
Very good. All right. Anything else? Very good.
That's all.
Very good. Ms. Smiths?
The filmmaker.
Oh, go ahead.
The filmmaker's name is Vanessa Von Hessler, is that right? It's on the website right there.
Good.
Von Hessler, yes.
All right. Ms. Smiths?
Thank you. I know it seems like a long way off, but for me, it's going to go very, very quick. May 9th is our first budget hearing. It will be in the fire station from 9:00 AM until 12:00 noon, so we're hoping as many people can come and make it to the session. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Black? Ms. City Clerk? No? All right. Mr. House?
Just briefly to announce that the city held a NOP meeting on the Hunter subdivision project last night, and the NOP scoping period is currently open. We're accepting comments on what the scope of that EIR should be. The scoping document is available on the city's website under the project planning page. The file number is 2010-40, and we're accepting comments until April 12th, even though the document says the 9th. Staff misspoke yesterday and agreed to add three days to the comment period to accommodate that misstatement in the meeting. But we're welcoming comments, and they will be provided directly to our department and forwarded on to the consultant to ensure the scope of the EIR analysis meets the expectations of the community.
All right. Ms. Smiths?
Thank you. I just want to announce that we're bringing the fiscal year 2018, 19 CI capital improvement project, projects to planning commission next week for general plan consistency review, which is required by the state 40 days, within 40 days of adopting a budget for those projects. So not much has changed from this year, except for the addition of the Measure T Streets and the, a couple of recreation projects that are in the pipeline, so.
All right, and maybe at the next meeting, you could report to us just briefly on the status of the York Creek Dam removal.
Will do.
All right, very good. Ms. Culberstein?
I just want to remind people, you'll be getting something in the mail with your next bill, I think, from Upper Valley. There will be a citywide cleanup effort on April 14th and April 21st, where you can put one big bulky item outside of your property, and it'll be taken away for free, courtesy of the city and UVDS. So if you've got something you want to get rid of, hang on to it till April, and we'll take it away for free.
Very good. What's big? Is that a dishwasher, or?
Well, actually, some appliances, there is a little surcharge for, and they'll bill you for it, but yeah, you want to get, you got an appliance you want to get rid of, you got a mattress, you got a lazy boy, you know.
Okay.
Now's the time.
Good. Mr. Ellsworth?
I just wanted to echo what Paul said and send out my thoughts to the families of the, of the Yountville tragedy, and just so that they know that we're, our thoughts are with them and our support in any way we can, so. That's all. Thanks.
Mr. Doring? Mr. White, wherever you are?
Hotel. So I am back here with Kate Miller, our executive director of NVTA, Chris Kitting, mayor of Calistoga, who's my vice chair of the NVTA, and also Alfredo Pedrosa, supervisor, who is our MTC representative. And we've been busy visiting our elected officials back here. Yesterday, we went and saw staff members from Senator Harris's office, Senator Diane Feinstein's office, and then we attended meetings with the Federal Transit Administration. We met with the acting director. So we're back here letting them know that Napa County does exist, and we're along with MTC representatives from all around the Bay Area, meeting with, with representatives from the different committees, talking about future projects for transportation and housing, and also trying to get a sense of how funding will be coming to our region in the next year or two, and in this budget cycle. So that's my report. And also, I would like to send my condolences to the families of the victims also.
I have nothing further, so that would take us to the consent calendar. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, now that our agenda is being published 10 days ahead, we would return to the form of approval that is used by other cities in the county, meaning that if anybody wishes an item removed from the consent calendar, please advise. That could be any council member, a member of the public, but I'm not going to read off the consent items at this point. We'll just move the consent calendar unless anybody wishes an item to be removed. Hearing that no item, nobody wishes an item to be removed, I'll entertain a motion to move the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second. Councilmember Ellsworth?
Yes.
Culberstein?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. We have no public hearings. And then that takes us to new business 10.1. And that relates to appointments to the Active Transportation Sustainability Committee. We have two, we have three applicants for three positions, and what I would propose is that in accordance with Ms. Heinz's wish, she wishes to be moved from a regular member to an alternate member, and that we accept Mr. Vence and Mr. Knight as regular members of the committee. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
I assume.
Second. Second.
No public comment on this, all right. City Clerk?
Councilmember Doring?
Did you want to speak publicly?
Do you have a question?
I didn't hear my name. Do you?
Oh, you're going to be appointed a regular member.
Oh, I didn't hear that, okay.
Yeah. Did I?
I think you missed, yeah.
What did I do?
Actually, for clarification.
You said Mr. Knight.
Oh, we have.
That's, I think, I'm a little confused.
All right. We have four, I guess I have it, we have four people for three positions, and I did miss Ms. Smithers. All right, then let me back up here and revise my suggestions, which would be that Mr. Vence, Ms. Smithers, be appointed to the regular positions, that Ms. Heinz remain, go from regular to alternate, and we will encourage Mr. Knight to apply when Ms. Heinz leaves the committee in June.
Which I'll be advertising soon to let the committee know.
Which you'll be advertising soon, if that's acceptable. All right. Is there a motion?
So moved. Sorry. I thought I heard her name, but I'm wrong, so. So there's, okay, just to be clear, because I'm a little bit confused now, there are two openings.
That's right.
Three applicants, and then Donna wants to be an alternate.
Moving from a regular to the alternate.
Regular to alternate, okay, so I didn't get that.
That created the second opening, yeah.
Yeah, so moved. Second.
All right.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Ellsworth?
Yes.
Culberstein?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Thank you for raising your hand, Pam. All right, that takes us to 10.2, which is presentation of the long-range financial forecast by Ms. Smiths.
Just a few moments, we're waiting for the PowerPoint to come up. Okay, here we are. So I'm going to be presenting tonight the fiscal year 2018 to 2028 Long Range Financial Forecast. A little bit about the Long Range Financial Forecast, or LRFF. It does provide a current and long-range financial forecast for the city, and this is for general fund only. It does identify any significant issues that may need to be addressed over time according to the assumptions in the forecast. It is important to note that it is not a budget, so by the presentation of the Long Range Financial Forecast, it's not approving these numbers. It's just a tool for the council and for citizens to be able to look at and just identify where we might need to make some corrections. It does utilize assumptions, and it offers several scenarios based on these assumptions. The assumptions that are made, they've gone through several revisions so far. We have presented the Long Range Financial Forecast to the SHAPE Committee, as well as met with the chair of the SHAPE Committee, Mark Smithers. And so we have, from those various meetings of feedback and comments we received, we have revised it. It is a living, breathing document. It's very fluid in nature, and so it is something that we will continually be updating as more information comes, comes to us. Our assumptions that we've made, these are the general assumptions we've made for the revenues. So we have a baseline, which is based on a continuing modest economic recovery, and it is, it is similar to actual revenue growth that the city did incur over the last 10 years. We did add a mild recession in for the revenues, and what this mild recession did is reduce the growth and decline in the baseline. So we took whatever the baseline numbers were, we looked at some of the historical trends, and then we adjusted it to what, what we would consider a mild recession. And then the third scenario for the revenues is we did a deep recession, and this was based off of the Great Recession that we had back in 2008 through almost 2011, as we finally had the recovery on it. So here, you can see what the assumptions that we made for the deep recession. We didn't quite do it as deep as a Great Recession, but it is pretty close to it. And then for all of the recessions, we did start the recession modeling in years 2021, 2022, and then coming out of it in 2023. Initially, economic forecast showed that 2018 is when we're supposed to start the new recession. It's typically about every 10 years. Right now, the economic forecasts that I've been reading, they're estimating probably 2021 for the next recession, but as numbers continually come in, we'll, we'll definitely be adjusting that. The other assumptions that we made in our forecasts for the revenues, we did do a baseline with a hotel in year four. So what we did is we added $600,000 to TOT beginning in fiscal year 22, 23 for a new hotel. We also modeled a hotel in year four with a deep recession, and then a hotel in year four with a mild recession. So we kind of presented a couple of different scenarios. This is a summary of the assumptions and the percentage changes. So what we wanted to point out is our three main tax revenues are property tax, sales tax, and transient occupancy, or TOT taxes. So you'll see out of those three, those three categories, they make up 88% of our total general fund revenues, and everything else we put into other taxes. When we look at the Long Range Financial Forecast and the details that I have, it's not presented in the report. Other taxes, we broke it out line by line, so we didn't just take 4.25 for all the other taxes categories. So we want to kind of let the public know, and also let the council know, that the three top are the heavily weighted. You know, those are the things that affect us the most for our revenues. For our baseline model, we used a 4% growth in property taxes, 5% growth in sales tax, TOT is 5%, and then other taxes is average of 4.25%. It is important to know for the sales tax, when we initially did this forecast, we published it, I believe about three weeks ago for the SHAPE Committee. Sales tax, we were estimated at five. We just got in our, our, our initial numbers from uni services, and they're estimated about a 3.9% increase. So again, it kind of points out that it's a very, for next year, yes. So it does point out that it's a very fluid document. For the mild recession, you can see 20, 21, 22, and 23, those are the assumptions that we've made, either growth or decline in those categories, and then what we did for the deep recession. For expenditures, the baseline, we, is based on a continued modest economic recovery. It is similar to the actual expenditure growth the city incurred has over the past 10 years, similar to the revenues. For civic capital improvements, we did put in some amounts for civic capital improvements. We did not put in the full report from EMG, because we're still waiting for the finalized numbers, but the numbers in this chart show that for next year, we put in 100,000, 19, 20, 300,000, 21, and 22, 400,000, and then 20, or 23 through 28 is 500,000. For the expenditures for the recession modeling, this is both the mild and the deep recession. What we do is, again, we assume that the recession is going to be 21 to 22, and then getting out of it in 23. And during these years, we place a hold on salary supply and service growth for those years. So scenario one, there are some updates from the models that you did receive in the Long Range Financial Forecast. The mild recession was not in the Long Range Financial Forecast, so that's a model after having discussions and receiving feedbacks and, feedback and comments, we added that into the model. I'm going to go through these slides fairly quickly, and my last slide does show a summary of, of all these sheets together. So the first scenario was a baseline. What you really want to look at in this model is, or in all these scenarios, is a very, the last two lines, lines eight and nine, that gives you your ending fund balance for the general fund in millions, and then your percentage of unassigned net position. So currently, council has a goal of 25%. So you can see with the baseline, we are like, we are stabilizing, so you can see where our general fund, our general fund revenues are, and you can see our unassigned net position. It actually goes up to 108% in this baseline. The next model we have is a deep recession. So even with the deep recession, it doesn't go as deep as one would anticipate, so it actually, the lowest we get down to is 9% in the general fund reserve, so we are not getting into the negative. We are taking from the fund balance for two years, or, I'm sorry, three years during that recession model. Scenario three, the mild recession. So this forecast's a little bit milder, and the deepest it goes down to is 40, or, sorry, 27% to begin with, but then when you actually come out of the mild recession model, it's at a 33%, and actually works its way back up to 58%. Here, you see the scenario with a hotel in four years. So this is a new hotel, $600,000 a year for TOT, going online in fiscal year 23, so you can start seeing a jump in your ending fund balance. The fifth scenario is a deep recession and a hotel in year four. So you can see with, with the hotel going online in year four, the lowest it goes down is 19% as opposed to 9% in the model without a hotel. And then the final scenario is a mild recession version of that, and so that, again, brings us all the way up to 82% in fiscal year 28 in our mild, mild recession scenario. So here's a great chart that, that's a lot easier than reading all of the other charts. So you'll see the red line across the bottom, that's the 25% reserve level goal. So you can see the various scenarios, where they fall below and above the red line of 25%. The only two scenarios that we have ran that fall under that 25% is a deep recession with a hotel, and then a deep recession, and you can see the other models trend upwards, and you can see where the percentage are. The, the, one of the main reasons for the Long Range Financial Forecast is just so you can see where, where our funds are going, where we're anticipating they go, but there are some risks to the forecast that are mentioned in the Long Range Financial Forecast report. Three main points for the forecast is that we are stabilizing. We did get that same information from our fiscal health analysis that we did not too long ago, so the revenues are stabilizing within St. Helena. It does give a large picture. The numbers are not perfect, they are definitely going to change, and they're, they're fluid. And then the third is that you do also have to be aware of any risks that we have to the forecast. One of the biggest risks that we have right now to the forecast just has to do with our fire department, and if we do have to go to more of a full-time model for our fire department, when that happens, that could easily sway the numbers by, you know, 200,000 to 300,000, if not more, per year. So it's just something for council and for the public to be aware of. And that's my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any initial questions?
I've, I've got a couple. So, let's see. First is that with the, the numbers on this, the, the way this was put together, is it, is it similar to the financial diagnostic in terms of its, of how the modeling is done?
It is a little different than the fiscal health diagnostic. What the fiscal health diagnostic did for the revenues and expenses, it took overall revenue growth over the past couple of years, and overall expense growth over the past couple of years, and it took whatever the overall percentage was, and it ended up being 4.7%. And it literally just took what our revenues are now, our expenditures, increased it by a bulk of 4.7%. The Long Range Financial Forecast went into a lot more detail, where we actually looked at all of the revenue sources by category, so property tax, sales tax, TOT, other taxes, licensed and permits, development fees. So we looked more into detail on those to see, especially during the recession modeling, what happened during the Great Recession, what happened during the recession in early 2000s, where you see development fees all of a sudden, you know, decline substantially where other, where maybe property taxes might not have. So we actually went a little more detail in this model.
Okay, and then, it's a two other, in, in looking at TOT in a deep recession, is that included in here if we go into a deep recession that, if we look at, say, the TOT, does that get impacted by a recession in terms of like vacancy?
Yes, it definitely will get impacted during a recession. When we looked at the Great Recession, there was quite a big dip in the Great Recession, but from the timing that the Great Recession started, the city's lag time was about a year to two years, and it almost took us three years to actually get out of that. When we looked at the recession in 2000, 2001, 2002, TOT took, it was, it was interesting, because TOT took a more significant hit than property and sales tax did, and one of the things we think that could have been attributed to is 9/11. People not flying, you might have more day trippers here, so people are still buying things, they're still, you know, the property values hadn't gone down, sales are still up. However, you probably, more than likely had more day trippers here that weren't staying overnight in hotels, and that was an anomaly, so we built that, we factored that into the forecast.
Okay, and then, thank you. And then the, the last thing is, is there a way to have a comparison model of other cities? I mean, I don't want to ask too much, but just in terms of, yeah, I think it's important to not, not look at things in a vacuum, that, that if we're, if we're looking at where we are in terms of health, financial health, how are we, you know, because we can look at the numbers where we are, but we lose, we don't have a perspective of where we are in, in terms of relationship to other cities. I'm just wondering if there's a way, when we present some of our numbers, that we can have a, a comparison, so that we, we see where we are relatively, so having some, some relative sense of where we are, so that it's just clearer. It's just, it's just a thought that it, at some, some way of presenting where we are in relation to other cities.
One of the difficulties there is that there, there may not be all that many cities that put together, particularly small cities, that put together a long-range financial forecast. It would be certainly, I think, very interesting if the city of Calistoga were to do so, or the town of Yountville.
Well, I think even just understanding where other cities may be in terms of their, in terms of their reserves, just, just so that we, we understand what's, what's, what's sort of the standard at some point, you know, that, just so we know when we're speaking that we're, we kind of understand where we are in the, in the spectrum.
It is, it is something that we, we could look at. As far as the reserve levels, it is going to vary by city, dependent on size and a different variety of factors. For instance, the city of Napa County of Napa has a lot larger general fund budget than, than the smaller cities do, so they might not necessarily need as large of a fund balance, because the fund balance is for contingencies. We have a disaster, we have a large sinkhole, we have something that, that costs substantial amount of money. Well, for them, 2 to 3 million dollars might not be as big of a hit, but for us, that would be pretty substantial. So that's one thing to keep in mind, that, you know, we are comparing it to what our 25% reserve is. The other cities, as Mayor Galbraith did say, not all of them do the, the long-range financial forecasting, but we could look at what their major sources of revenue, their revenue sources comparative to budget, and we can look at their percentages. The other thing also to take. The other thing also to take into consideration is different cities are differently weighted. We're pretty even between property sales and TOT, and I believe we're pretty unique in that. You have other cities that are very heavily weighted towards TOT, very heavily weighted towards sales tax. So there's a lot of things to take into consideration. So I would just caution, looking at that and doing a direct comparison.
Thank you.
The other challenge there is that some cities don't, some cities are full-service cities, other are partial-service cities. Some cities will have libraries that are general-funded, others will not. And another complicating factor is the amount of property tax that's allocated to them is different, depending on what city you are. Some cities have much less property tax that they receive than others, just depending on the allocation. And so that creates a challenge to identifying apples-to-apples kind of comparison. I think one of the things that we could probably quickly find are survey results from inquiries of various finance directors or city managers that ask, what is the fund balance? What percentage of your reserves, what do they look like in your city versus other cities? So some of that data may be readily available for us. And that's frankly, probably, a pretty good way of looking at how disciplined these cities are at maintaining reserve levels. Everyone should have relatively good reserves today, after growing out of this recession for a period of time. But if you've kept an eye on some of these newspaper reports, and we're trying to get a much clearer handle on exactly what those numbers will be by having an actuarial analysis performed on our pension costs, but we're anticipating that those are going to increase in most California cities, really all California cities, over the next several years, peaking about FY '22, '23. So my concern is, well, we're going to understand exactly what those numbers look like for us here pretty shortly, and then update this forecast accordingly. But we've made an educated guess to date. But I think in other cities, they're going to experience potentially the overlap of a recession at the same time their pension costs are spiking.
One thought that just came out of this, and this is a little longer-term look at it, is maybe identifying five or 10 similar cities that have a similar balance or size that we do. And over the next five, 10 years, you know, we always know kind of where they are, so that we always understand where we are relatively speaking. And it can just be, you know, a long-term project, so that we always sort of know when we're talking about where we are, we can quickly say, oh, these are the cities that we've identified over the last couple of years that we're similar to, and this is where they are. So we always sort of have a, you know, understand where we are relatively, rather than just operating in a vacuum. So maybe that's a more longer-term project, but just a thought.
Any further initial council discussion? Can I open the public hearing? Let me open it up. Does anybody wish to speak publicly to the long-term financial forecast? All right, I'll close the public hearing. One thing that...
I had a couple of questions.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Comments. I think some people are maybe curious about what I view as sort of a policy choice that has been sort of introduced into this long-range financial forecast, and that is using the hotel or no hotel as an example. Can somebody speak to that, why that was decided? And, yeah, I'll just leave it at that.
I can speak to that. The reason we modeled that is because there is an approved hotel in the city today that could come into City Hall tomorrow for a building permit. And so we've tried to make an educated guess about when that, if they started building tomorrow, when would that hotel be open? And so the reason for that is because of that particular permit. And the number 600 is simply a guess. And so that's, you know, that's a bit of a guess, but so is the year. And it's based on the fact that the permit is approved, the project is approved.
Okay. Now, with respect to the potential effect of going to a more professionalized, and I'll use that term just for some simple reasons, professionalized fire department, do you anticipate that that will be a gradual transition if we get there? Or would it be, here we are, and this, you know, we're paid hourly firefighters, and we jump to, you know, a chief and three full-time firefighters? Do you think it'll be a gradual step to that, so that we can prepare for that over several years?
That's a great question. I think that because of the strength of the fire department and the strength of the volunteer program, it will be a transition. And in talking with the chief, my understanding is that the city's call volume on fires, on emergency calls, has really spiked in the last couple of years. And we think that's for a couple of reasons. One, which puts more pressure on the system itself, this part-time system. Part of that is the economy is better, and there are more people in town, and there are more accidents, which drive a lot of these calls. Another observation is that the signal at Grayson is contributing to additional calls. And so we see additional calls happening. And I think the chief has been contrasting our numbers with Calistoga, which I understand went to a full-time model in about 1996. And for many years, our call volume has been below theirs. And I think right now, we're maybe trending slightly higher in the current year than they are. But we're accomplishing that with a part-time staff. The other challenge that we're having is, particularly during the day, we're having trouble having enough people show up and be available for calls. And so that's putting a lot of pressure on the daytime call volume. One of our firefighters was recently hired by a different city. That person is still available to assist with calls locally on certain days. But that will, that particular opportunity for that individual created a little more challenge for us a couple of days a week. And we know that others have options as well. And so when we lose some of the staff that have historically taken a lot of those calls, it doesn't take more than a couple of people to immediately put us at risk of having to put a person in the station full-time. And so we've talked about, the chief and I have talked about a couple of models. And in fact, given some of the challenges that we're experiencing now, we're anticipating wanting to bring you a study session as early as within the next six to eight weeks, just to talk a little bit more about that very question.
And I just, I would like to share this. I kind of agree with some of Jeff's thoughts in terms of comparison cities, even with the limitations that you've laid out. And there are a lot of limitations, I recognize that. But I think it would be important for us to know what cities are maybe over-reliant on certain revenue and where we are. I think it's good for us to keep pace on that basis alone, just to see where our revenues come in, to see what the growth of our personnel is. There, you know, we can look at those things over 10-year periods and kind of go, yeah, at least we're in the ballpark. We're maybe not growing as fast as those cities. We have different, maybe, I would say, I would argue that we have a more balanced revenue stream, and that's a good thing for us. So it, you know, it confirms maybe that we may be more balanced by looking at other cities to see if they're overly reliant on TOT or that thing. So I think it would be, you know, maybe we can get four or five different measures. Granted, they're not going to be perfect. Granted, there are going to be a lot of footnotes to them to explain, but I think that would be good for us all to have a general feel for that, especially our own cities, you know, to the north and south of us. That would be very helpful for me, at least, so.
Well, presumably, maybe I'm going to say something that is incorrect, but I've been a student for several years of the statistical section at the back of the Consolidate Annual Financial Report. Among other things, for example, it tracks year by year, I think over a 10-year period, the number of fire calls and breaks them down. My memory, I'm not looking right at it, is in the last couple of years, it's been around 850 calls, which was certainly going up from prior years. But hopefully, presumably, and maybe I'm wrong, the city of Calistoga, the city of Napa, also track in pretty much the same way their fire calls. Or we track over a 10-year period, year by year, the number of full-time equivalents on city staff. And presumably, Calistoga, Yountville, and the city of Napa and their kaffirs do the same thing. So in that sense, there may be some fairly readily accessible sources of comparison. The other thought I have is, on the reserves, is that some cities have reserves wholly apart from sort of the idea that you should have a certain percentage of your reserves to cover operating costs for three months or whatever, which is basically what we do, or hope to do. But they have additional reserves, which seems to me prudent, for economic uncertainty, so that you're not put in the position of significant staff changes while you try and ride out a recession. And what we know here is that it's, there are real long-term costs if you have to let go staff during a recession, because you lose your corporate memory, you have to rebuild that, and there are tremendous costs in that. And I've certainly seen that in my nearly eight years in city government. And that's perhaps hard to put your finger on it, but those costs do catch up with you, and they can be significant. So I just throw that out there. And then the other thing is that I would hope and urge folks to read through the entire report, including the discussion, the much more detailed discussion with respect to the risks we face, including unfunded infrastructure needs. You know, I keep thinking that if that hillside that collapsed on the Silverado Trail had been in-city limits rather than outside-city limits, right there, you're talking about perhaps as much as $2 or $3 million to fix that. Mercifully, that's the county, not us. But that's the kind of thing that, when you have very old infrastructure, as we do, can happen to you. So, yes, we're stabilizing. And of course, the SHAPE Committee is wrestling with the fact that revenues are not adequate to recapitalize our buildings, which are in deficient shape. Obviously, we wouldn't have buildings with tarps if we had the money to assess them. First thing you do is fix a roof, as far as I'm concerned. And we've got at least three buildings with tarps on them. So those are just my thoughts. But really, this is a great exercise. The city did this first in 2015, as I recall, with Ms. Phillips. And then it was revised, I think, in 2016. And it's great to have it come forward again now in 2018. And, yes, I completely agree that this is something that needs to be revised annually, and projections are projections, and they can change significantly through externalities that you don't, that in the best guesstimates you make, you don't end up projecting all that well. So those are just my thoughts. Any other thoughts on this?
I have a comment. I want to thank you for putting this together. And in my view, this is an excellent planning tool for us as we move forward. And I agree, revisiting it every year or so and seeing how our assumptions panned out or didn't pan out will help us with budgeting and the like. I think this is excellent for the SHAPE Committee. And we all knew going into the SHAPE Committee that we weren't going to solve our problems by just selling one piece of property without a plan as to where we were going to go. And this may give them some idea of maintenance work that we might be able to do with our reserves or, however you want to call them, unallocated funds. But it is true, we have tougher nut to crack to figure out how to actually replace and rebuild facilities. And second, I would like to say, you know, people say, oh, we're in good shape, but if there's a recession, ooh. That's true of everybody. And I would like people to accept the fact that we are in much better financial condition than we've been for a while. And we are often compared to Yountville and Calistoga, whose, I think, TOT is close to 60% or more of their revenues. And in a recession, I would submit, they're probably going to be almost in worse shape than we would be. And so I want to continue to move forward on a more positive note and plan and figure out how we're going to address these issues. And thank you for putting this together.
Any other council comment?
I just have one other comment on the study session with the fire department. I think that's really, really important. So anything to get that up and going is great. So I really appreciate it. And thank you also for putting this tool together, this long-range forecast. But that fire study session would be really important.
Right. I mean, the fire department also... Oh, yes, Mr. White.
Don't forget, I'm still up and participating.
It's only a quarter to 10 where you are.
It is. Ten to ten, yes. I would like to thank April. I think this is a great tool for us to use in our planning processes. I think this should be an annual exercise, keep updating it. And, you know, things are going to keep changing. Of course, these are assumptions. I think all the work that she put into all the different scenarios is really going to be helpful for us after we, you know, have the input from the SHAPE Committee to be able to make some educated decisions. So I appreciate all the work that's been done. Thank you.
All right. Any further council discussion? Thanks again to the Finance Department for this effort. That is going to take us to 10.4, which we're going to put ahead of 10.3. Mr. House?
Thank you, Mayor Galbraith. I'll wait while my PowerPoint comes up.
So 10.4 on the amended agenda? I want to make sure that we're...
It's 10.3 on the amended agenda. It was 10.4 on the original agenda, but we're going to take it as 10.4. I got that right?
I guess when you start talking about it, I'll catch on.
The item was 10.3 on the original agenda. It's 10.4 on the amended agenda, and we're planning to take that one first.
Right. Well, maybe I got it backwards. That's what I hope I had said, but...
Thank you, Mayor Galbraith, members of the council, and the public. Item 10.4 on the amended agenda is a review of a request from Mr. Joe McGrath for council approval of an alternative equivalent proposal to satisfy the inclusionary housing requirements for the approved projects at 632 McCorkle, as allowed under St. Helena Municipal Code The McGrath project was approved in January 2017 as an eight-unit multifamily development project at 632 McCorkle. The city has an inclusionary housing requirement that all projects over four units must provide 20% of their units as affordable housing. That results in a number of 1.6 units for the McGrath project. Under that same code section, applicants may meet the requirements through an alternative equivalent proposal or pay fees. However, that must receive council approval in order for that to be done. Unfortunately, in the review of the McGrath project, the planning staff did not appropriately apply the inclusionary housing requirement, which is why we are now bringing this item before the council for review and action. So the basic inclusionary requirements, as mentioned, are 20% of the project is affordable, which would result in one unit being deed-restricted to very low income and one, or in a partial fee payment of the .6 units. And this would meet the requirements that the developers are allowed to do essentially ministerially. However, there is an alternative method whereby the developer could propose an alternative equivalent proposal, and that's before the council tonight. It is worth noting that the basic inclusionary requirements of 20% would allow the developer to request a concession or incentive. However, that would be done through the development review process. So just worth noting. So the proposal before the council is to deed-restrict one two-bedroom unit and one for very, I'm sorry, low-income, and one two-bedroom unit for moderate-income residents for a period of 20 years. And those are both located on Grayson Avenue at 1246 and 1244. Request to eliminate the covered parking requirements for the 632 McCorkle project as a concession or incentive. And it's worth noting that because this is proposing 25% of the units as affordable, there is another opportunity for the applicant to request a concession or incentive, and that's through the municipal code section 17146050F3. And so the last element of the proposed alternative is to defer all mitigation, or I'm sorry, all fees, municipal fees, for the project until occupancy of the project. And then the request is that this alternative... And then the request is that this alternative be seen as meeting the requirements of the city's inclusionary housing. In order for the city to grant this request, the city must find that the project is equal or great, providing equal or greater affordable housing opportunities and benefits to the city. And staff has reviewed the proposal and does find that that's the case, in that it is proposing to deed-restrict two units, totaling 25% of the approved project units count, rather than one unit, and a partial fee payment, as required under the standard inclusionary housing requirements. It also locates two affordable housing units on the west side of San Alina, which has been identified by some folks as an area lacking in affordable housing units. It provides affordable housing units within walking distance of several schools, and the size of the deed-restricted units are slightly larger, and included garage as an added amenity. So with that, it is recommended, oh, I'm sorry, I will speak to, there is a slight direct fiscal impact. Should the developer meet the basic requirements through the 20% inclusionary housing, a small fee of about $3,000 would be paid into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in addition to the single unit being deed-restricted. However, staff, again, does find that the proposal to deed-restrict the two alternative units and the other elements as providing equal or greater housing opportunities to the city, and there is no direct fiscal impact from the request to defer fees, given that those fees are collected prior to the building permit being final. So based on that, it is recommended that the city council find this requested alternative equivalent proposal to be in keeping with SEQA under the project's infill exemption, and also review and act on the request from Mr. McGrath for approval of an alternative equivalent proposal, providing two units on Grayson Avenue as deed-restricted affordable housing units for 20 years, rather than the one unit and the payment of the .6 for the project at 632 McCorkle. Given that, staff is available for any questions, and Mr. McGrath is here in the audience.
All right. Any initial comments from the council? Mr. White?
No. I mean, I'll wait until after I hear a public comment. I mean, I guess I can speak up. I think this is a very generous offer. I think it was very unfortunate that it took this long, and I thank Councilmember Cobberstein for catching this and bringing it to staff and council's attention, that the inclusionary requirement was missed at the initial application. But I think this is, I think this is a very good solution, and that's all I have to say for now.
All right. Let me open the public hearing. Let me first ask council, though, is this considered to be a land-use application or just a standard public comment?
I believe that this would be considered a land-use application, and I would recommend that the council proceed accordingly.
All right. So the applicant, if he wishes to speak to it, would have 15 minutes. If there's a spokesperson for the opposition, I'd like that person to be identified, because he or she would have 15 minutes. Otherwise, comment would be limited to three minutes.
And, excuse me, council, I forgot to identify that two letters came in. I believe they're written directly to you, but they were written in opposition, seemed to be in opposition, that there's a, some language requesting they don't, that the council not change the classification of the project from market rate to inclusionary, but they did seem to be opposed to the concept.
All right. So, Mr. McGrath?
Well, I guess we're all fortunate, because I thought I only had three minutes, so...
Well, you can take three minutes.
So I only wrote one page.
Okay, good.
Good evening, mayor, council, and staff. It has been over two years since I first submitted an application for the property at 632 McCorkle. In that time, we have virtually, we faced virtually every obstacle conceivable to build a modest state unit apartment complex with a target market of median income on land zone for that purpose, and at the lowest density allowed by the city. In response to neighbors early in the process, among many things, we reduced unit count and increased front setbacks. We made sure that the parking requirements were sufficient to city municipal code. We agreed to staff request to perform traffic studies. We agreed to staff request to perform biological assessments. We agreed to staff request and iterated design review level plans to show things like curb elevations, which are well beyond the level of detail necessary for design review. And I can say this as a professional, because I sit on a planning commission and I review design reviews every two weeks. Over a year ago, design review approval by the planning commission, I'm sorry, design review was approved by the planning commission, and then was appealed by San Alina Residents for Equitable General Plan, which is, I believe, a 501(c)(4), and a less-defined group, the McCorkle East Side Neighborhood Group. That was appealed to the city council. That was rightly rejected, the city council rightly rejected that appeal. Then that petition was taken to the Napa County Superior Court, who appropriately ruled and rightly rejected that petition. And then now is under appeal at the appellate court level. As part of that opposition effort, regulatory agencies have been mobilized, starting with the California Architecture Review Board, the California Resources Board, the Napa County Department of Environmental Health, and the California Water Resources Board. Nonetheless, with the opportunity for virtually any reasonable financial return exhausted, about six weeks ago, exactly two years into the, approximately two years into the application process, and having completed plan check, after multiple, several iterative reviews, and the staff can attest to that, we were finally ready to pull the building permit. I was then told that the requirement for the inclusionary policies were missed, and that this requirement must be met prior to proceeding. The inclusionary requirement, I assure you, came up early in this discussion. I'm a pretty detailed guy, and I think those who have worked with me at this point would probably attest to that. I reviewed it as part of my due diligence, including having it underlined in the housing element, my copy of the housing element. I was told at that time I could pay an in-lie fee of $40,000, and that $40,000 has always been in my budget. So you can imagine, this is the, basically, the proverbial straw that broke the camel's back. Imagine, two years at a time, one man year of personal resource invested, 910,000 of equity locked in property, $150,000 in development costs incurred, $270,000 of legal costs incurred, $130,000 of soils remediation costs incurred, a dilapidated but potentially redeemable house already demolished under permit. Designed frozen with virtually no possibility of change and very little possibility of any cost amortization or cost avoidance. And you know, basically, as you know, and as even the State Assembly knows, that without concessions, it is not possible, in the state of California, to build non-subsidized affordable housing. That is why the state has passed multiple bills to try to achieve that objective. And I have managed to float along here for two years without any of the goodwill associated with an affordable housing designation. And my sister project, the Brinkley Project, obviously, a great project, has received the benefit of all of that goodwill. To put this in context, to put that cost in context, without even building on the site, monthly rental rates would have to be well over $1,500 a month just to get a single-digit return on our sunk investment. This is before the imposition of the inclusionary requirements. So as you can imagine, I guess, and the only metaphor that I can think of to describe my current situation is being in the middle of a wide and treacherous river crossing. Going forward is no more appetizing than going back at this point. But I, one thing is certain, is I cannot stay where I am. I'll drown. I have worked with staff to craft an alternative equivalent proposal that I believe is equitable and fair, based on where we are in the process. It is an effort to make lemonade out of lemons, and I believe it is the right thing to do for the city of San Alina. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in opposition? All right, I'll close the public hearing.
No.
Oh, well, then, please approach the podium.
I'm a resident of San Alina. I'm not speaking in opposition. I'm speaking, I have no problem with this. The one thing I can say, that it seems that 17146 would apply. My question is, why 16 months after it went to the planning commission, after a 387 staff report, page staff report, that included a whole variety of things, we're just now finding it? I think that's the issue we have to ask ourselves. But I think, at least I know for myself, I'm not in opposition to this. I would be supportive of it. The one thing I would say, though, Mr. McGrath has accused me specifically numerous times of turning him over to a variety of state agencies, which I have not done. And trust me, had I done it, they would have been a lot more effective, because I would have put a lot more energy. I have not turned him over to a single other agency.
Thank you. Further public comment?
My name's Boba Monnet. I'm speaking as a resident. I'm speaking as a resident that lives right next door to this project. And I, again, am not speaking in opposition to this, but what you are dealing with right now. I don't see, it seems like a slam dunk, you know, that it needs to be done. But I will say, you know, before, the carport is going to come down as part of the concession. And I know this isn't a design review. However, since the covered parking requirement is not going to be happening, the driveway where all these cars, however many are going to be here, is 10 feet from the bedrooms in my home and in my rental, which is behind my home. So it's 10 feet away, and there's no barrier of any kind, except a wire fence right now. So because the covered parking requirement is now gone, I was hoping that in, I would like to ask the council to consider that in, with respect to actually public safety, because cars in the apartments next to me, their driveway is right next to the fence, roll through the fence regularly. You know, I mean, it doesn't happen every week, but it's happened several times in the past few years. So in, in supporting public safety as well as my privacy and my ability to be able to sleep, because cars are going to have headlights on 24/7, they're going to be making, potentially, because the hospitality industry, which sometimes are the employers for many people who live in apartments on my street anyway. People come in and out, you know, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock, because of the nature of the jobs they do, and they leave early. So with respect to the noise that I'm going to be suffering, the light, you know, that intrusion into my life, I'm wondering if a fence could be required. A fence that's strong enough to stop the light from coming through, stop the noise from the cars from coming through, and prevent a car from actually rolling through a fence, be strong enough and thick enough, so it would prevent a car from rolling through if the brakes go off. And, you know, it's happened, people backing up and so forth on the other side of me. So I wouldn't necessarily think it wouldn't happen here. And I, when Jackie Rubin was the police chief here, I had some issues with the noise from the apartments on the other side of me, and that's what she suggested I do. I thought it was a really good suggestion. She suggested a cinder block wall. I'm not going to talk about building a wall, but, at all. But I'm thinking of something more than a wooden fence or a see-through wire fence. I'm thinking of something substantial and strong, and something that would stop some of the noise and the light from the headlights, and some of the noise from the car radios that are many times being played when people come in late. So that's my plea. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment?
Hi, Elaine DeMann. I have more of a question than a comment, because I didn't see this addressed anywhere. And that is, but I did hear $1,500 a month rent mentioned, and I'm just wondering, what is considered fair rent for low income and fair rent for moderate income in town here?
All right.
I'm happily housed. I'm not looking for a place to live. I'm just curious about what those numbers are.
I'll let Mr. House, any further public comment, then Mr. House can address your question. All right, I'll close public comment.
Do I get to rebut?
Oh, excuse me, yes, by all means, yeah.
So I was in town today to look at nine wall prototypes. So first of all, the design review plans clearly call out a five-to-six-foot redwood fence right now between the two properties. That's part of the design review approval. It's designated, if you look in the site plan, it's already there. Secondly, if you look at the, if you look at the civil plans, there's a drainage curve, six-inch drainage curve that runs along the entire property boundary with Ms. Monet. The third thing is that when we met to confer at the required conference in the litigation that was brought before you, I put together a pretty comprehensive proposal in an effort to not take a costly legal process forward. And one of that, one of those items on that proposal was a more solid block wall to meet the requirement, to meet sort of Ms. Monet's request. That was part of a list of about five or six things that I proposed in conference to try to negotiate a settlement for, as part of the litigation. So, you know, under that scenario, I was more than happy to do that. Under current scenario, I'm happy to meet the requirements as, the approval as design, the design as approved here, which is a redwood fence.
All right. Thank you. Any further public comment? All right, I'll close public comment. Mr. House, can you respond to Ms. DeMann's question?
I can. I always struggle with, is it 60 or 80% for low income? That's what I was trying to verify. So, yes, so we have, for a three-bedroom unit, at 60% of median income, the rent is $1,397, so essentially, $1,400. At 80% of median income, it's $1,865. And then for 120% of median income, which is moderate, that's $2,700 a month. So moderate income for a three-bedroom is $2,700. Again, I'm trying to remember if low income is 60%, which I believe it is, and that's $1,400 for a low income, or very low, I'm sorry, thank you, Mary. And then low income is 80%, and that is $1,865 approximately.
All right. All right, is there any further counsel discussion?
I think it's fair to say that going forward, we're all going to have a better handle on our inclusionary housing ordinance. And I think one of the beauties of this ordinance is its true intention is to provide housing, but to provide it as pockets of development within proposed residential developments. And one thing that's very clear is that if the proposed developer does not do that, then you do come to the council and you ask for some alternative, or you offer to pay a fee. You don't simply fee out at the beginning without coming here first and talking about your alternative proposals. I thought in this case, I mean, the, my experience representing... I thought in this case, I mean, the, my experience representing developers, um, this was something that we had to raise and had to do. It wasn't like we had the discretion to decide we're going to apply the inclusionary ordinance or not. And we did get some comments of, why are you classifying this as inclusionary now? We're not really classifying it as inclusionary, it's always been subject to inclusionary. I thought, uh, you know, felt sorry for the situation we're all in. You don't like to be a developer and be this far down the road, and suddenly you have a new requirement that you have to wrestle with. For that reason, one thing that really hasn't been spoken about yet this evening is that the council, in evaluating this, did ask a third party to give us, uh, a review of the financial, uh, books for this project on McCorkle, to help us understand what was feasible here and what wasn't feasible. And, uh, you know, it's real clear to me that at this stage of the game, it's not, this project is not feasible if we would have required even one of these units to be on the McCorkle site. And I think it was, uh, fortunate that we had an option, and that Mr. McGrath was willing to, um, propose it. Another thing that I think is important is that, um, his original requirement was to provide a very low-income unit, but we did determine that we had satisfied those requirements already, so we could move up to the next level. Which is why I feel that when you look at what we're required to find here, that we are satisfying to an equal or greater extent what would be required, um, I'm very confident that we're doing that. First of all, we're getting two units, not one point six. I believe it's also important to point out that the tenant that's in there, my understanding, is not going to be thrown out. We're not creating a situation where somebody's going to be evicted, uh, to make way for this implementation of this program over on McGrath.
On Grayson.
I think McGrath, Grayson. Um, finally, I'd like to speak to the carport. Um, it's, it's not a secret that I was not a big fan of the carport in the first place, but, uh, there is evidence from our review that, uh, we are in a very close financial condition on this property, and I personally think that to relieve the developer of the requirement to provide covered parking makes sense. I think it also makes for aesthetically, a less dense appearing property, and does allow more light and air into those, uh, units, so I can, uh, fully support that. Um, I think that's all I have to say.
Any further counsel comment?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll say a few things. I guess my, you know, my problem with the project has been that it's this undeveloped street, you know, we're adding a lot to a, an undeveloped street. I know that we're talking about a housing strategy, working on it this year, so hopefully, going forward, we avoid this by having things laid out, um, ahead of time, how we're going to do things, so that it's, it's not a problem for a developer, it's not a problem for the neighbors, everybody knows what's, what's happening. So I still struggle with the fact that I feel like the, the project on that street is, it just adds this, um, cumulative impact on the street. I see Ms. Monet's point on the fact that she lives right next door, and, um, and I understand Mr. McGrath's frustration, um, with this whole process, so I, I'm seeing all the components. I think the, the recognition of the inclusionary factor, uh, I think the solution for that is excellent. I think that we need to relook at how we do our in-lube fees. Over the years, uh, it seems that, that's not enough, what we've been asking in terms of in-lube fees, to actually get the housing built. Um, so, uh, I, I think we have to look at that, this goes to this housing strategy we're going to work on this year, and so hopefully, this kind of thing, we won't keep running up against it, we'll have a plan in place for the future. Um, so, where, that's sort of where I am, is, is, you know, I still have difficulties with the project being on McCorkle, uh, but I do believe that the solution in terms of the, um, inclusionary aspect is a, is a, is a good solution on that. And, um, I hope that something can be, uh, arranged in terms of a bear, a barrier that is satisfying to the neighbors. So, that's sort of where I am.
Mr. Dorian, any comments?
Pretty much agree with everything that's been said so far, except for a couple maybe nuanced points. Um, and maybe our staff can comment on the, um, the proposal for twenty years versus any other number in perpetuity or something. I'm, I'm not there yet, twenty years to me seems, well, from the developer's point of view, that's plenty of time. Um, I'm a little concerned that twenty years goes, comes and goes very fast, and it would be nice to see that in perpetuity, or even thirty or forty years. I don't know if that, that number was, um, incorporated into the Cosmott analysis to, to determine whether it was sort of, uh, fiscal, uh, you know, financially viable, I guess is the way I would say it. The other, the other point, and I'll just make the other point, um, Councilmember Coburn mentions the idea of, well, you know, um, the developer's not going to evict, uh, the tenants at, at Grayson, um, but I'm, I'm actually concerned that there's a disincentive to evict the tenants at Grayson, and I think we need to button this up a little bit. First of all, the word eviction to me is a term of art that I would use, um, it's in our staff report, eviction is different than just a lease coming to an end and somebody moving in. I think we have to be very, I guess the point is, here's the what-if, here's the unintended consequences I'm looking at. What if the existing tenants stay in, in their existing, uh, units for the next ten or twenty years? Does that mean that the, um, the deed restriction of the affordable housing component never really comes to fruition over that period of time? We, we have to be careful that we don't do that, so we have to work that language, I think, a little bit more. And I, I, I don't want to cast aspersions, it's just I'm a lawyer and I look at that, uh, we have to be very careful about that. There would be, really, I mean, if, if, these tenants could stay forever, and, and then that really defeats the purpose. So I'm, I want to maybe explore that a little bit more. But I think it's, uh, for all the reasons that, that, uh, Mr. McGrath has stated, and the frustrations and the comments of council, I'm, I'm supportive, uh, of this as a very, a good, good solution. Those are the two issues that would hold me back from voting in favor of the proposal.
Can I just say one more thing? Just so there are no more surprises for you, I mean, this, um, does require us to put a regulatory, uh, the deed restriction is a little more developed, I believe, in terms of a regulatory restriction on how you rent and how you verify, um, income. Um, and that'll be coming down the pike, just so you're not, uh, surprised. I think eviction was a poor choice on my part. My understanding was the tenant that's in the low-income unit at the present, we believe, would probably, uh,
Income qualify.
Be qualified.
Question asked.
Right, and that the rent is, uh, within the limit of where it, um, it ought to be, or maybe adjusted slightly by a hundred dollars downward, or something like that.
So in response to some of the questions, um, I think the, Mr. McGrath mentioned that the existing tenant may qualify, but that would obviously have to be vetted, uh, and that was his goal, is to allow the existing tenant to remain in, in the unit. Um, I think the benefits of having a moderate and a low provide some flexibility in how those existing tenants could be met, um, but that is, that is a discussion. The Cosmott analysis was on the specific six-three-two McCorkle project, did not take into consideration the alternative proposal. And I, we could obviously revise the language, um, rather than eviction used at the end of the lease, or, or some alternative language, but Mr. McGrath would have to, um, comment on that.
Do you want me to make a comment?
Sure, yes.
So, believe it or not, in my original proposal, the purposes of putting the in-tenant thing were not for my interest, they were to avoid having to evict tenant. Um, the median income unit right now is rented, uh, I'm sorry, the mod, the unit that's designated, would be designated as moderate income is currently rented at rates below moderate income. Um, so, you know, we can work on the detailed language, but I'm pers, perfectly acceptable to maintain that underneath moderate income, independent of how long a tenant stays. Now, whether that individual qualifies or not, I guess I would probably leave to the city to figure out how they want to regulate that. Um, the, what I, I guess I would offer is on the, on the, to be low is to, basically, that's slightly above, uh, low income, and to freeze that rent. Um, and, and then, you know, during the period of time we're talking about is to freeze that rent and not have it go above low. Uh, and again, whether that individual qualifies for that or not, you know, can be, uh, how the city regulates that can be up to the city. And, uh, obviously, my property manager would work with the city on that, just like, uh, we do with Section Eight or, or, uh, other tenants we have in our properties. Um, so, the details of that language, I, I think we can work out, but, you know, uh, I'm okay with that sort of intent.
Can you speak to the twenty-year issue versus a longer period?
It's really a, a component that, I mean, you know, again, I'll just reemphasize It is not, I, I just, it is not possible to build affordable housing in California, in a metropolitan area, or even close to metropolitan area, without, non-subsidized, without concessions. It's virtually not possible. And, and when you look at a, so, uh, imposing and, I mean, interpreting or misinterpreting or imposing an eleventh-hour inclusionary requirement without the benefit of cost amortization, we probably would have not, for sure, we would have not reduced this from ten to eight units to meet that requirement. And we would have asked for parking concessions.
No doubt you would have had a different project.
It would have been a different project. And, uh, to, to, to enable it to be affordable. And, uh, who knows, maybe I would have gotten a couple brownie points at least for, uh, the affordable component of the project. You guys know very well, the, the Brinkley project is subsidized to a tune of one million dollars. The Turley project is subsidized to nearly a tune of one million dollars. So, this is just a means of, like, containing, uh, I've, I've shared my financials, it's really a means of containing, uh, this is not a high return, this is not, this is barely a single-digit, low is like one to two percent return, uh, on equity, at this point in time.
Would you be willing to go to thirty years?
No, I don't, actually.
All right.
I, I actually don't. Um, I, I feel like this is a, a, a very equitable proposal at this stage in the game.
Fair enough.
And, and, um, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Any close public comment? Any? Yes, you may. Please, Mr. Belt.
My name's Tom Belt, I live on Hillview Place. Um, it's come to my attention that the original plan had solar panels on the carport, and that the project was sold in part on that green consideration. Um, can I ask you where the new solar panels will, will be going?
So I guess I would like to defer that expense, um, but, um, just, just so you know my background, I, I worked for three years at SunPower.
Can you address the council, please?
Yes, so, so just so you understand my background, I worked at three years for SunPower in the solar industry, so I'm a huge solar advocate. Um, I have nearly forty kilowatts of solar panels installed between my house and other properties we own, so I'm, I'm a large, big advocate of solar panels. Um, so I would like to defer the expense, meaning get, get this thing occupied and get it, and get it in a different financial state, and, um, I'm more than happy to put solar panels, uh, on the roof, which is, um, not, uh, sort of reviewable by state law.
Okay. Thank you. Well, let me close the public hearing. Any further council discussion? Mr. White, any further words?
I'd say that, uh, I'm very much in favor of, of the proposal, uh, that the applicant has put in. Um, and, uh, I think if, if we're really serious about having more housing in our town, uh, you know, we've got to make some concessions and also, um, try and relieve some of the burden of, of developers of this type of projects on, uh, multi-family, uh, zoned properties. So, um, I am, I am very much in favor of what the proposal is. I think it's very generous, and, and, uh, I want to see this project move forward.
All right. My position, my position is that under the circumstances that have been presented to us, the alternative equivalent proposal is fair and equitable, and I will support it. At this point, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the alternative equivalent proposal. Is there a motion to that effect?
I would move to approve.
For a second.
Is there any language that, uh, that the staff would recommend to, uh, address my concern about the, um, the potential for tenants to maybe not qualify for, uh, be low-income and, and really never qualify, and sort of that issue just sort of hangs out there? We, we have to have some, some parameters there, and I don't know what the language is, or what's appropriate. And I understand your concern, too. I'm, I, again, I'm not casting aspersions, I do think that, uh, Mr. McGrath has done that for the benefit of the, of the tenants, and I, as a landlord, would be doing the same thing. But I, I just want to make sure that it's, um, there's got to be some point in time where either qualify or don't, and then you have to, maybe, if you don't qualify, somebody else has to qualify, so that it becomes true low-income, uh, a low-income property.
I, I support that, to, having language that, that ensures it. I think that's what we're trying to do.
I, I actually have a question for Tom on this. It seemed to me, I mean, isn't there some, uh, relocation language in the regulatory agreement generally?
I have not reviewed their, our standard regulatory agreement in preparation for this, so I'd have to look at that. Um, one of the, one perhaps option that we could look at would be that we, um, we would address this concern, uh, in the regulatory agreement, and bring that back to the council for, um, for review and consideration.
That's fine. All right. And I, and I would add that, given the circumstances, especially the fact-
Can I say something?
Yes.
Um, doesn't our, any of our affordable housing, um, units have to be, uh, vetted, or the tenants have to be vetted through Napa Valley, um, Housing Authority, that our partner who does the, does the income checking and all of that?
That, that is the city's current process for confirming and managing affordable housing units, uh, that are deed restricted.
Okay.
And that would be-
So what else do we need?
I think the council member Doring's concern is the language regarding when the, um, deed restriction goes into place and how it affects the current tenant, who we're not aware if they qualify or not.
Correct.
Okay, so I guess I don't understand council member Doring's concern. Is it a concern that if the current tenant doesn't, um, meet the deed restrictions, that you would want them to stay, or that you would want to see them, uh, somebody else have to move into that unit?
Well, if they don't meet, uh, the income qualification measures that are established, then it, it would, it would be, um, it wouldn't really, the deed restriction would ever, never even come to an existence. Theoretically, that tenant could be there forever, not meet the, the income restriction or qualifications, and so then we would never really have a true deed restricted property. That's, that's the concern I have. I know maybe I'm not making myself clear. They may very well meet the, the qualifications, and that would be great.
The current proposal, uh, has language that says, "The applicant further requests that this component of the proposal not result in the eviction of the, an existing tenant, and that the existing tenant be evaluated as to whether he or she meets the qualification of this income category, and proposes to freeze the current rent in the interim period."
And if they don't qualify, then what would be the consequence?
Well, I think, uh, what, um, city attorney Brown identified is that we would work out, um, some type of a concept through the regulatory agreement that was being imposed on the parcel, and bring that back for council review, um, and bring that back for council review and deliberation at that time.
Okay. So, I still stand on the motion that we move forward with, with this proposal, and, and bifurcate the council member Doring's language proposal comes back to us.
Can, I just-
Go ahead.
What's the, what's the contingency if, if they don't meet the, I mean, do we have a plan so that if, if that unit doesn't become affordable, that we do have an affordable unit to take its place?
So, in thinking about this in the minute that we've been having the conversation, the staff is imagining we'd have to create some type of a timeline whereby the deed restriction would take effect in the agreement.
I think that's already built into the ordinance, I can't put my finger on it right now, but I believe that the timing of this unit being affordable coincides with the timing of the certificate of occupancy at the new building, and so we have a period of time to evaluate the situation with the current tenant. But my recollection is, you know, that there, I believe there was some relocation assistance or provision in the Turley Agreement, and that was a little bit different, and that people were actually thrown out of the property. And I'm just curious whether that's customary, and I know you haven't had a chance to look at it, so I'd be in favor of looking at the regulatory agreement, because nobody wants to take someone out of an affordable living environment. However, we do want to create one that stays that way in perpetuity, not, for 20 years. You know, as a point in fact, rental units are supposed to be in perpetuity. There are some very unusual circumstances in this particular case. I wouldn't necessarily be willing to sign off on 20 years for something else.
Well, let's see where we are here. We have a motion.
For the record, should we repeat the motion?
Yes, we have a motion. Go ahead.
So, go ahead. So, I make a motion to accept the proposal as is with further study of how to activate the affordable component to it. Does that make sense?
Second.
All right.
Vice Mayor White.
Yes.
Councilmember Doring.
Yes.
Cooperstein.
Yes.
Ellsworth.
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith.
Yes.
Okay, that then takes us to 10.3, Consideration/Direction Regarding Conceptual Indemnity and Defense Ordinance. And, Mr. Halse, I guess you're up again.
Thank you, sir, and members of the council and audience here and public. So, the item before the council is consideration and direction regarding a conceptual ordinance making changes to the indemnity and defense requirements for certain housing projects. As was just recently discussed, in January 2017, the city council approved the design review and demolition permit for project, multifamily project on 632 McCorkle. Two groups challenged this city council decision, and after the approval, and the project was, was taken to litigation. This example of a recent, the recent McGrath project provided an example of kind of how the viability of small residential infill projects, which are even by right projects, and, and the housing element is allowed by right, can be affected by legal challenges, given the price of real estate and other development implications, or, I'm sorry, impacts up valley. And so, in, with this into consideration, and in response to the recently council-adopted goal of creating a citywide housing strategy, the item before the council is consideration of whether certain classes of housing projects ought not to be required to assume some of the costs, or potentially all the city's litigation costs, under certain defined circumstances. And so, a conceptual ordinance was provided to the city council, attached to the staff report, and it's intended to initiate a conversation of possible preferred policy. And the draft ordinance that's there would amend the current regulations to provide, as a matter of general applicability, so broadly applied, that an obligation to pay the city's litigation defense costs on appeal would not apply to smaller residential development projects, and it's currently classified as 20 units or less, which satisfy the city's inclusionary housing requirements, so they have some element of affordable housing in them, where the trial court had entered judgment upholding the city's decision to approve the project. If the council chooses to direct staff to move forward with this ordinance, based on the conversation tonight, staff would amend the ordinance if needed, and take the project before the commission, planning commission for their review and recommendation prior to bringing it back to the city council for a, a full vetting of the actual ordinance itself. So, this is a conceptual ordinance for the council to essentially have a conversation on, and then, if there's support for it, then staff would move it through the standard ordinance adoption process.
All right. I think when you spoke, you said project at one point, but you meant ordinance.
That's correct.
All right.
My apologies.
No problem.
And so, currently, there's no direct fiscal impacts of this, because there's no action requested on the council tonight. If the planning commission adopts the sample ordinance verbatim, we couldn't predict what the financial implications would be, but essentially, the current draft identifies that projects who are, which are approved by the city, which include affordable housing, and are sued, challenged in court, and win that case, the city then agrees to take over the appeal costs of those projects for certain limited ones, which are currently identified as 20 units or less. So, staff recommends that the council accept public input and provide direction to staff with respect to this policy issue. And if so, if, if the direction is appropriate, we'll move it forward through the ordinance adoption process, with reference to the planning commission.
Any initial comments by council members before we open the public hearing? Let me open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak to this public hearing?
Good evening, my name's Elizabeth Gels, and I live on McCorkle Avenue. First, I want to say that I am in agreement with the last discussion, 10.4 on the agenda, in regards to the inclusion ordinance on the two apartments going over to Grayson Avenue, low-income. However, I am opposed to item 10.3 on the agenda, which makes the proposed ordinance that will cover legal expenses for developers. This order, this ordinance is being proposed to accommodate Mr. McGrath and his property at 632 McCorkle. This project was not inclusionary at the time the project was approved, and it is not appropriate to make it retroactive to accommodate him now. And in addition, I would like to also note for the record that as Peter White and Joe McGrath have been friends since childhood, and as confirmed by Peter, and we, I would like to request that Peter be able to recuse himself from continuing votes on this project. Thank you.
All right. Any, any further public comment?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Jeff Feeney, I live at 930 North Crane Avenue. I worked with Joe McGrath on the purchase of this property at, at 632 McCorkle. But, the reason why I'm standing in front of you tonight regarding this, this idea of helping people who are being sued and costing them a lot of money is not because I think that Joe McGrath is entitled to any type of free ride. What I think it really establishes is that, first of all, I think the appeal process itself should be looked at again, and I don't know if one person or a group that is comprised of two or three people should be allowed to bring a lawsuit against someone. I think that there should be a certain amount of the population that needs to sign a petition to go ahead and appeal, and then I think those people need to have their names out there, not hide behind the name of a group. If you're willing to go ahead and take somebody on in terms of their position on a project, you should also be willing to, as a citizen of this town, have your name attached to it. I have no doubt that everybody in this room has different opinions on many different subjects, which differ from mine, and I'm okay with that. But when it comes to somebody who's trying to do something for our town, and that person or that group has brought forward the project, which the city has vetted, the planning commission has vetted, the city council has vetted, and it has been approved, and somebody then says, "No, I don't agree with that," it makes it very difficult for us as a city to move forward and welcome anybody else to come in here and do anything. We have a process here which is taking the onus of the defense of the city's position, which was signed by, or will be signed by any applicant right now, but it should be looked at in a way that you say, "Hey, look, we're the city, if we support your project, and we're with you on this project, we're not going to let you ride alone, and let somebody just come in here and, and take you through the mill." Especially when it comes to housing. There were thousands of people displaced through the fires. Many people we all know, or have lost their homes, their places to live, their places to live next to their work. We have opportunities here to build housing. If there's any word in this town that everybody says we need more of, it's housing. And in this particular instance, we should look at this ordinance and say, "You know what? This is a damn good idea, and the city of St. Helena should stand behind it and help the people who are trying to help St. Helena." Thank you.
Any further?
And council members, I would add that we did receive a letter in support of this item as well, and I'm sorry to mention that in my presentation, it is on the dais.
So, to defend Mr. White, yes, our families have known each other for 45 years or so, at least, as far as I can remember. He's a friend, is a, it would be like, I have hundreds of families that I've known in St. Helena for that period of time. Secondly, this is really not, I don't think about me, this is about creating a risk threshold or limit that enables someone to endeavor to take on a project in this community and reasonably hope to have some idea as to what, where that investment in the community may play out. This really, at this point in time, doesn't really have much to do with me. As I said, I've sunk over $400,000 in what I would call completely non-value-added cost expenditure. I think what this really has to do with is, you know, is the word "community." And, you know, when I think about, you know, when I describe this place that I grew up in to others, I often use the word "community," and I, and I greatly attribute my sense of identity as being largely formed in and by this community. In my lifetime, there have been, always been rich and poor here, but mostly there was middle class. The McGrath family was on the low end of that spectrum, but I always felt like we belonged, and I always felt like we greatly contributed to that fabric. And my experience is, you know, my friends, parents, what were they? Vineyard manager, dentist, stonemason, winery owner, contractor, carpenter, and these are just a few of the occupations of parents of some of my best friends growing up. And at that time, we didn't draw sharp lines around socioeconomic status, and I think we all intuitively understood that all these roles are critical to the functioning of fabric of a small town. What I've witnessed over the last 30 years is that the threads of this community are being pulled on, and to the extent of threatening the fabric. The cost of housing here has risen exponentially over that time, as it has in many places in California. The beauty of the valley, the vibrant wine industry, the image of tight-knit charming community has, have drawn thousands to invest in second homes or retire. The net result is that affordable homes, ownership, or even rentals, has been placed out of reach for most of the middle class. And without the middle class here, providing goods and services necessary to support a vibrant economy, coaching baseball teams, or staffing the fire department, as we just talked about, or teaching, it's difficult to envision that this community looks like what it continues to maintain, that fabric. And by necessity, the goods and services necessary to support this town will need to be imported. It's really that simple. And with that importation will be congestion, traffic congestion, and degrading the sense of belonging. And, you know, I could go on about this, but this is really about creating an environment that enables you to have a housing stock, that enables a socioeconomic, sort of integrity to the community, that makes it function as it does, you know, where it's located, and for the industries that it serves, et cetera, and for the type of community that I think you all want to live in. It's not about me.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment?
Vicky Bregge, I'm a resident, and I'm not expressing an opinion yet on the policy, I mean, on the change in the ordinance, because I think that's a pretty interesting public policy question. I am, though, interested, as Mr. Doring said, that there are some potential unattended consequences to this, because right now, there's only one project that this would apply to, and that's the current project. And if we apply it to this project, the city likely will be triggering a public works coverage issue. Now, I know most people think of public works as a city is building something or another, but that's not necessarily the case. There are three elements in a public works project. First of all, the activity has to be identified as covered by a public works. Pre-construction, construction, demolition, tree removal, repairs, all of those are covered, and it's California Labor Code Section 1720, which is the definition of public works. It has to be under contract, which clearly this is, and it has to be paid in whole or in part with public funds. That can be found in section, Labor Code Section 1720B4, and it reads, "For the purposes of this section, paid in whole or in part out of public funds means all of the following: Number four, fees, costs, rents, insurance, or bond premiums, loans, interests, or other obligations that would normally be required in the execution of a contract that are paid, reduced, charged at less than farm market value, waived, or forgiven by the state or political subdivision." Clearly, I think that's what we're dealing with, with the way, the, changing the contract to provide some relief or subsidy to the developer on the indemnification issue that he's already agreed to. What does that mean? It means that all the activities, the pre-construction, demolition, tree service, tree removal, would have to be paid at the prevailing rate for, and in California, that's primarily a union rate. It would mean that certified payrolls would have to be provided, apprenticeship standards would have to be followed, and a myriad of other things. If it is a public works project, then all the work that's already been done, the tree removal, demolition, pre- constructions, would have to be paid at the prevailing rate retroactively. Just because a project is privately funded and at fair market value, does not mean it doesn't trigger, or it can't trigger, a public works coverage issue. All one has to do is look at the San Diego Hilton project, which was a $350 million public works, privately funded hotel complex that was at fair market value, and, fair market value, and it was found to be a, a public works project because it had a rent credit associated with it. No money was exchanged, it would, the city was providing a subsidy by way of a rent credit. And I, I know public works issues are complicated, but to kind of paraphrase what Mr. McGrath said, my background was 12 years as the Secretary of Labor of the State of California, and the State Labor Commissioner, and they have responsibility for coverage determinations and public works enforcement. I would suggest, before you, we think about applying this retroactively, that we get a public works determination, coverage determination from the Department of Industrial Relations, and then you'll know for sure. But if not, it puts both the city and the developer in some jeopardy.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment?
Good evening, Mary Stevenson is my name, and I'm speaking as an individual, not representing any group tonight. And I think that this is an important conceptual idea that you have, and I know that there's a lot of things that need to be worked out about it, but I think it's a very important part of the housing strategy that the city is developing. In the 10 years I've been involved in affordable housing, the city has not been particularly interested in or promoted housing that is in, within reach of the workforce of St. Helena. And we now have the ability to develop a strategy to do that. And if we do that, and we have projects that are by right, approved by the plan- And if we do that, and we have projects that are by right, approved by the planning commission, approved by the, by the City Council, and then approved by the courts, and are still able to be taken out of operation by a small group of people with access to legal counsel, then we will never get any housing built in this town. So I really appreciate what you're doing, and I think you should work out the kinks, because it sounds like there's some kinks, but this is something that will be very much important as a part of the housing strategy going forward for our town for the next 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Further public comment? Well, let me close public comment. And once again, what you're seeking from us is direction to see whether we're willing to direct the planning commission to study this further and come back with a recommendation to us.
Essentially initiate the process, that's right.
Initiate the process. And so with respect to the legal point that's been raised, that's a point that can and my judgment should be researched, potentially run by the appropriate State Department. I don't mean in Washington, I mean the State Department.
Nobody there.
Nobody there. So that the planning commission, or at least by the time it gets back to us, we have the benefit of their thinking, because I can see that if there's a prevailing wage issue and the state government takes the position that that could be applied to all the work that's been done, that that too could be a deal killer. I mean, how else could I express it? So we need an answer with respect to that, I think. So my suggestion is that, is that we agree to send it to the planning commission, the legal work will need to be done, and then wait for the planning commission's recommendation.
Well, I just wanted to do a what-if. One of the questions I have, just, I'm seeking clarification on the language of the ordinance, and maybe it's a non-issue. What if there was a housing project that was completely affordable, not market rate with an inclusionary housing obligation, but just a pure affordable housing project? And say it was 22 units. Would that project have the benefit of this ordinance, or would they be excluded under the language that's written now?
As it's currently written, it applies to units that are 20, or projects that are 20 units or less.
And so I understand, we want to encourage the fiscal reality, the ability to build housing in our community, and I am in favor of that, market rate or not, frankly, because there's such a need. There's no doubt about that. My concern is that we're creating an incentive for potentially less housing if we don't apply this to, potentially, and maybe the planning commission can work through this, a larger project. And I'm not necessarily promoting a larger project, I just know that we all know, frankly, the economics of a project that's less than 20 units is very difficult. We know that, because the city has had to give quite a bit away to some of these projects. So that's just on my mind. It wouldn't preclude me necessarily from moving forward on this and directing the planning commission to deal with it, but I, I do think that a pure housing project should also have the benefit of this kind of ordinance on appeal, after, you know, all of the other elements have been met. So maybe, maybe I'm going off on a tangent, but that's something that just occurred to me.
When you said pure housing project, you meant pure affordable housing project?
Yep, yep, I did. Thank you.
And, you know, I'm sympathetic to that viewpoint as well, but that's an issue that the planning commission, I think, can should explore, but I believe that we're all in agreement that we should be referring this to the planning commission for further study at this point.
I've got a few comments.
All right, go ahead, please.
I would like to just address Mrs. Gels's concern of conflict of interest, and, I mean, I've got hundreds of friends that I've grown up with over the years here in St. Helena, including, oh, some people that are in the audience that I can see. And I see no conflict of interest myself. This is more of a policy issue, not specifically to one developer. And being on a co-committee with Councilmember Coburnstein, I think it's our intention, and we looked at this ordinance review as something to remove some of the barriers that we see that would, or that do create a really, a real hardship for, for future development of housing and a housing strategy in this, in our city. And I look forward to looking, looking at, you know, continuing to look for more incentives and more barrier removals in the, in the future. And I agree with Councilmember Doring, you know, that we need to look at the indemnification of pure affordable housing projects in, in larger situations. So that's how I feel about it.
Further comment, Mr. Ellsworth?
Yeah, so I've got a few comments. So in looking at this, my, I go back to the housing strategy, that planning, what we're going to do, and I think what happened here, we have a beautiful town, wonderful place. We moved here, we grew up here, however we came here, that we all want to protect and have thrive and continue. We have some limitations, we have some constraints, limiting factors. We have two two-lane roads that feed into this town. We have, we're in the middle of a county that makes decisions that, that we don't necessarily have a say in, and I think we should have more of a say in. So proper planning is, is the, is the foundation. And I can point to places that didn't have proper planning, San Fernando Valley, Silicon Valley. Those might have turned into something that was a benefit to somebody, but a lot of people also see that as a loss of agricultural land, or something that was once something, and rural turned into paved urban environments, because there wasn't a long-term plan. So housing strategy, to me, is a long-term plan. People who live here and own homes, and have owned homes here for 40 years or 10 years, have an investment here. It's a, it's a business for them, too. It's their investment, it's their nest egg. So I think they have a right to speak up if something is going to impact that investment, whether it's quality of life, or health, you know, health, welfare, safety, words like cumulative impacts. So some, one of the people who spoke up said, "The city should help the people that are trying to help St. Helena in, I guess, in building housing." And I completely agree that that's a need here. We need, and we should have seen this earlier. We've all been remiss in this, in not recognizing that we should have come up with a plan sooner. However, the words cumulative impacts come from looking at projects singly, approving them without consideration of the whole. So that goes to a strategy. So I think that when we're talking about a policy like this, that would help a developer know that they're, they're not alone when they get an approval, it has to tie into the strategy, so that the developer would, would come in with the understanding that the city has worked out a strategy, and if, if they would like to work with that strategy, then, then we're all on the same page going forward. So that's why I think that this is important to look at, it's important for the planning commission to start designing what it is, but the, the loose ends on it need to be open, so that it ties into the overall strategy. What I worry about is moving forward with a policy that's separate from an overall strategy. So I think the timing is good to look at this, to start designing what it is, at the same time we're designing the rest of the strategy, so the whole thing's comprehensive. Because if, if we don't plan this correctly, we'll lose it, this town, this, this, this county will move in a different direction than maybe we want it to, because outside forces. So having a, a policy, a strategy, and having this tie in, I think that's, that's critical. That's, so that's where I'm at, is that I'd like to see it go to the planning commission with the idea that it's going to be integrated into the larger strategy.
Any further Council comment? I mean, my, Ms. Coburnstein, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have just a couple of comments. I am in favor of moving this forward to the planning commission. I do think we have to ask them to look at and think about unintended consequences here. And one of them that was raised, and I agree with you, I think we should get an advisory opinion from the DIR of what impact this might have if it is applied to the project we're discussing tonight. But I am, and I'm generally comfortable with the idea of smaller inclusionary projects, because they don't have the contingency in their budget to absorb a lot of unexpected expense, whereas a larger project generally does, because it has a bigger contingency. Whether 20 is the right number or what, I think we have to get to that. But I think we have to look at unintended consequences another way. If you had a project that was primarily not a residential project, but it happened to have four residential units there, and there happens to be an appeal, which goes principally not to the residential component, but the other component, where is the indemnity obligation? And are we keeping it, or are we relieving it? And I think these are all things that we have to look at. And lastly, I would just say, you know, it's not proposed in this ordinance, and I'm not in favor of changing our appeal requirements. People have a right to appeal, and I'm satisfied that what we have, you know, works and is appropriate.
I think it's probably beyond our capacity to change the appeal requirements. In any event, that's governed by state law, California rules of procedure. But in any event, I think we're all in agreement, this should go to the planning commission, and hopefully, they'll get to it in, with all reasonable speed, and then it will come back to us. So there we are. Okay. I think that concludes our agenda for this evening.
Do you have to vote on that?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, it was just direction to staff.
Was there a consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So with that, with, with that, just one other, one other matter that's on my mind, just to think about, and that is that in the past, we've typically had just one meeting in July, and my suggestion is we think in terms of the second, the third Tuesday in July, and not the first Tuesday in July, but I'd like to have a discussion about that at the next City Council meeting.
And that's something that we were anticipating, it just doesn't show up on the calendar at the moment.
Okay, good. Thanks very much, everybody.